All right. Thank you, everybody, for coming to the Clean Water Board Public Hearing, number four. I'm Douglas Farham, Chief Operational Officer for the Agency of Administration. Secretary Young recently designated me as the Chair of the Clean Water Board. For a little background, very quick, and I don't want to pull it up, want to get the meeting to the good part, but I've been following the Board since its inception. Initially, I was at the Tax Department doing a lot of the revenue analysis that the Board used then to figure out how much money was on the table to use for clean water purposes. So I was on the funding side of things, and last year moved over to AOA to help deal with the federal funds. So I have insight into the various federal funding streams that come into play, and some of which are used by the Clean Water Board. So I'm honored to be here. I think this Board does extremely important work, both to the quality of life in Vermont, our economy, there's just so many reasons the Clean Water Board is important, and I look forward to working with you all. So I'll walk through the agenda really quickly. We're gonna, the next item is going to be a, the background and fiscal year 23, walk through the budgeting process, Emily Byrd. Then we're going to go through more of a detailed presentation of the Clean Water Budget by agency and some component unit staff, kind of line by line, not quite line by line, but program by program, giving some more detailed information. And then I noticed that we had some more people sign up for public comment. That's great. So we expanded, we recently amended the agenda to expand the public comment period a little bit. That, you notice we did a last minute amendment to the agenda. If you saw that, that was only to expand the public comment period. And then we'll talk about next steps and hopefully adjourned by fall 15, trying to be respectful of everyone's time. So I think, without having anything else come into the top of my mind, it's been a little while since I was chairing a board, it's been about four years, a little rusty. But Emily, I guess I'll hand it over to you for the.
Sounds great. And just a friendly reminder, if folks can please keep their microphones muted when you are not speaking, and if at any point you have technical difficulties, feel free to use the raise hand function to put that on my radar. If you go to the top bar of your team's meeting, you'll see a smiley face and a hand. That's where you can find the raise hand function. And if you are someone who's calling in, you can use star six to mute and unmute. So great, thank you. So to get us started with an overview of the Clean Water Fund and the budget process, just a little bit of background on the Clean Water Fund. The Clean Water Fund was established through the Vermont Clean Water Act or Act 64 of 2015, and the goal of the fund and the Clean Water Initiative that it supports is to restore and protect and maintain water quality in all of Vermont's waters. And the Clean Water Funding that we're going to be talking about today helps many different partners, municipalities, farmers, and others to implement projects that will reduce pollution washing into Vermont's waterways. And a lot of this work is driven by these large-scale Clean Water Restoration Plans that we refer to as Total Maximum Daily Loads, or TMDLs. And you can see most of our state is covered by a large-scale nutrient TMDL. So nutrients, as a reminder, are necessary for life. They're important, but when they're out of balance in our waterways, they can cause a range of water quality challenges. So the Lake Champlain Basin, as well as the Lake Memphurmagog Basin in our state, are both working to implement the phosphorus TMDLs to address ionobacteria blooms and other water quality challenges. And then the eastern side of the state, the Connecticut River Basin, which drains to Long Island Sound, is working to address nitrogen pollution, which is causing low dissolved oxygen, making it difficult for aquatic life to survive in Long Island Sound. So all of the work we're talking about today has a role in implementing those Clean Water Restoration Plans, and in addition to providing those large-scale benefits, also bring about local water quality benefits. And I also wanted to highlight that these investments are driven through a process called Tactical Basin Planning, which is done for each of the different river basins in our state, really working with community partners to identify water quality challenges, using the best available science to identify what types of actions are cost-effective in addressing those water quality challenges. And then we provide a feedback loop on how we're doing and what additional actions need to be taken. So that's really the infrastructure that drives this work. I wanted to share a little bit of background on the Clean Water Budget Process. So in Vermont, the Clean Water Board is an entity established in law to oversee the Clean Water Budget Process and to make its annual budget recommendation to the administration and the legislature. The Clean Water Board has five state agency secretaries, as well as four public appointees appointed by the governor's office. And the Clean Water Budget includes revenue from the Clean Water Fund, some capital bill dollars, as well as effective last year and this year, and again, next year, state fiscal year 2022 through 2024, $10 million each year of American Rescue Plan Act federal dollars as part of the COVID response at the federal level. And so the Board takes public comment into consideration when building its budget and goes through a public process each year, holding a series of meetings, including this public hearing, to bring the public up to speed on what is proposed and to gather feedback. And then, once that budget is recommended, it goes through the legislative process and eventually gets appropriated to each of the state agencies that are on the receiving end, and those funds get awarded out to local partners doing good work to improve water quality statewide. And on the right here, I'm showing the state fiscal year 2023 Clean Water Budget Process. So we kicked this off with an October 13 Clean Water Board Meeting. Now we have our public, our budget posted for public comment from October 19th to November 19th for 30 days, and this public hearing is right in the middle of it so that we can present the budget to the public, so that you can have a better understanding of what it contains and how it was built. And we will also have time in the agenda to hear public comment, and we'll be recording that. And we have an ongoing online questionnaire where folks can log on online and weigh in on the budget priorities as well. And then after the public comment period wraps up, we will work to compile all of those comments for the Clean Water Board to review, and the Clean Water Board will reconvene December 14th, where they will make any adjustments that are appropriate based on public comment and finalize their budget recommendation before it gets baked into the governor's budget proposal to the legislature in early January, and then runs through the legislative budget process. Wanted to highlight that these funds are awarded out to multiple state agencies and work to address water quality challenges across all the different land use sectors, from agriculture to developed lands and roads, as well as the restoration of natural resources such as floodplains, river channels, lake shores, and wetlands, as well as wastewater treatment to address pollutants of concern. And in addition to addressing water quality pollution across these different land use sectors, these projects bring about multiple benefits ranging from flood resiliency to supporting local economy, as well as providing habitat benefits and recreational benefits, just to name a few. And once this budget process ends, that is not the end of providing information to the public, we try our best to be transparent and accountable about these investments. So step one here is really where we're at today with the Clean Water Board running its budget process to inform the distribution of funding to agencies. Step two, agencies run their funding programs to grant contract and loan out funding to partners to implement projects. And then we have quite an inter-agency infrastructure in place to ensure that there's data coming back to a centralized Clean Water Reporting Framework database so that we can gather data on these investments and the results of those investments. And then each year, we report on the progress through a few different tools, including our annual legislative report called the Vermont Clean Water Initiative Performance Report. And then we also make those data in the Clean Water Reporting Framework Database available through an online dashboard and, and also through an online explorer where you can search for projects and see what's happening in your region. So now we're going to move into the presentation of the draft state fiscal year 2023 budget. That's the budget that the Board is currently working to develop, and it will go into effect July 1st of 2022 through June 30th, 2023. And this budget includes revenue from the Clean Water Fund projected to be at approximately $25.9 million, as well as a projected $11 million in the state's capital bill, and an additional federal American Rescue Plan Act investment of about $10 million totaling $46.9 million in state fiscal year 2023. And I think it's important to note that this is an all-time high in terms of the total revenue that we're budgeting for as part of this budget, which is great to see this investment. So I wanted to highlight that Act 76 of 2019, that has been coined the Clean Water Service Delivery Act of 2019, provided some updates to our budget framework, including establishing a long-term funding source for this work, which is a really important milestone for providing assurances that we will be able to meet our water quality targets. It also updated Clean Water Fund priorities and established four new grant programs that I will, that we will be getting into as part of this presentation. So at a high level, I just wanted to summarize what those updated priorities are that are established in law. Tier one is the highest priority, including the inspection, verification, operation, and maintenance of existing projects to make sure that those are able to continue to perform and that those investments are protected. The establishment of a new water quality restoration formula grant, continuation of Agency of Agriculture's water quality programs to farmers and partners, a new water quality enhancement grant program and basin water, or basin planning and basin water quality council participation are in the top priority category. Then the medium priority category includes funding for repairing riparian conditions for flood resiliency, work related to implementing the acceptable management practices for maintaining water quality on logging jobs, and municipal stormwater implementation grants, as well as investment in innovative and alternative technologies or practices and purchase of ag land where it is not possible to meet water quality with the existing practices. And then the final lowest priority is the Developed Lands Implementation Grant Program, which is related to funding and financing for the three-acre general permit. So when we were building this budget, our approach was to review existing programs from prior year budgets and identify where they align with the updated funding priorities, and then introduce new line items related to those new funding programs that were established in Act 76, and putting those into the appropriate priority tier. And then we allocated the highest percentage of funds to the tier one priority and progressively less funding to the tier two and tier three priority, as well as other activities. It's important to note that there are many other funding sources that these dollars leverage, and that is factored into our decision-making. And so a high-level summary, 54% of the budget is allocated to high-priority activities, with 29% allocated to medium priority activities, and 17% to low priority or other priority activities. So a quick overview of how you can participate. Thank you for being here at this public hearing. We're really interested in hearing your comments when we get to that part of the agenda. In addition, you can take a look at the Clean Water Board webpage. There's a link here, and we can also drop one in the chat where you can access the draft budget and the online questionnaire to complete that by November 19th. And you can also subscribe on this website to our list serve to be kept in the loop on future opportunities. And that online questionnaire that we have out, it asks, at a high level, three main questions. Do you think funding levels are sufficient? And if not, what additional funding is recommended? Second, do you agree with the percentage of allocation of funds across the high, medium, and low budget priorities? And if not, what would your recommended breakdown be? And then, do you agree with the proposed ranking of budget line items within each of those statutory priority tiers? And if not, how would you prefer it be ranked? And then there's an opportunity to provide general comments. And now we're going to get into our budget presentation here, where we'll go through each of the programs that are funded out of the state fiscal year 23 budget, rotating through the different agency presenters. Thank you to all the agency staff that helped put this together. And just to orient you, each slide you're going to see will have the line item title, its number, as it corresponds to the budget sheet. That's on page five of the Clean Water Budget Overview in the meeting materials. What priority it fits into, a photo example of a project, and an overview of what types of projects it funds, who receives the funding, whether it's voluntary or regulatory in nature, and a fun fact about the program. We're going to kick it off with Mike Mittelman from Agency of Administration.
Thanks, Emily. So this line is the Stormwater Utility Payments. This is, can be found in line four, number 4.2 in the other category. These are grants for the establishment and maintenance of stormwater utilities, their amount of $25,000, with the intent to provide five years of payments to participating municipalities. Utilities help raise local revenue to construct, operate, and maintain stormwater infrastructure on an ongoing basis for that municipality. This used to be a priority in the statute, and Act 76 of 2019 did make it so it's no longer statutory priority. We have still kept these in the, in the budget and slowly phasing them out. The FY 23 budget, the total amount is $25,000, which reflects the fourth-year payment to the town of St. Albans. Other recipients besides St. Albans include Williston, Colchester, South Burlington, and Burlington, each of which have received five years of incentive payments through fiscal year 2022. So this would be, again, the fourth payment for St. Albans, so we'd anticipate that this would also be presented in the fiscal year 24 budget next year. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Next up, we have Laura DePietre from Agency of Agriculture.
Hi, thank you. So the Agency of Agriculture predominantly works with farmers and partners through grants that we give them, and there's a few photos here to just demonstrate the type of things we do, but essentially, this is the largest category. And you can see, we do structural, like pouring concrete, and we help buy equipment. So a lot of the additional practices that help farms meet these conservation goals are not the traditional equipment, so it's more innovative equipment. So we support those programs. We support partners like UVM and the Districts and folks like that to do technical assistance directly with farms and then plan projects, and then have the money to obviously implement those projects. So some of the things that are in this category as well are some of the pasture support, as well as like buffer tree plantings and things like that. And then the second category that the Agency of Ag has is for our staff and operating. And so essentially, the folks that do the regulatory work to go out on farms and those as well that support the grants out to all of these partners, a portion of them, not all of them certainly, are supported by these funds. And so, yeah, it's been interesting, since 2015, when we were able to get capacity within the Agency of Agriculture, you can basically see a tripling in the abilities that we have in terms of the number of staff we have and the number of enforcement actions that we have, and then, as well as the amount of money we're able to bring in and the amount of money we're able to put out.
Thank you, Laura. Next up, we have Gary Holloway with Commerce and Community Development.
Hello, everyone. This is Gary Holloway with the Agency of Commerce, Community Development, and the Downtown Program Manager, Department of Housing and Community Development. I'm going to talk about Better Connections and Downtown Transportation Funds as it relates to the Clean Water Funding that supports these programs. The Better Connections Program is an inter-agency planning grant program between VTrans, Agency of Commerce, Agent Natural Resources, and the Vermont Department of Health that supports the implementation of local projects to increase local transportation options, build resilience, the implementation of local projects to increase transportation options, and to just revitalize our communities in general. So these are planning grants that will then support infrastructure projects where the Downtown Transportation Fund comes into play. The Downtown Transportation Fund is a financing tool which assists municipalities in paying for transportation-related capital improvement projects, such as bike pedestrian amenities, you know, sidewalk enhancements, park improvements, and whatnot. The Clean Water Funding will help municipalities incorporate best management practices for stormwater into the infrastructure projects and help make our downtowns more vital and resilient. The applicants are municipalities. We have annual, annual grants for the Downtown Transportation Fund, and we have bi-annual grants for the Better Connections Program. The $200,000 that we have going into the program supports, yeah, $5 million of infrastructure money that we have through the Downtown Transportation Fund. So it goes a long way in helping to support kind of stormwater efforts in these designated village centers and designated downtowns. Thank you.
Thank you, Gary. Okay, next up, I'll give an overview of the Department of Environmental Conservation's Clean Water Initiative Program Item. Here we have a new program that is established through Act 76 of 2019, effective starting this year, which is the Water Quality Restoration Formula Grants to Clean Water Service Providers. And these funds will be distributed to new watershed-based Clean Water Service Providers that were established through a rulemaking process in the Lake Champlain and Lake Memphurmagog Basins, and funds will be distributed through a formula that's based on the non-regulatory phosphorus reduction targets and a cost per unit of phosphorus reduced. And these programs are really focused on providing assurances that the non-regulatory phosphorus reductions that are required to restore Lake Champlain and Lake Memphurmagog will be achieved. And these funds will be focused on non-regulatory clean water projects with a phosphorus reduction value, including projects like floodplain or wetland restoration projects, rain gardens, addressing stormwater, or tree buffer plantings, and natural lakeshore stabilization projects. And Clean Water Service Providers will be advised by their basin water quality councils with representation from many different types of organizations, and will be working to sub-grant these funds to project implementers, including watershed groups, natural resource conservation districts, municipalities, and regional planning commissions. And the next item is operation and maintenance funding related to those formula grants that will also be administered by Clean Water Service Providers. And the purpose of these funds is to support the long-term operation and maintenance inspection and verification of non-regulatory clean water projects. And that these activities occur after construction to make sure that they continue to perform as intended to protect that investment. And these funds will be allocated, as I mentioned, to Clean Water Service Providers, who may sub-grant some of these activities to local professionals. In addition to the formula grants I mentioned before, this provides us with additional assurances that we will be meeting those non-regulatory phosphorus reduction requirements that are needed to restore Lake Champlain and Lake Memphurmagog. Next, we have our basin planning and basin water quality council participation, education and outreach line item, and this supports the ability of partners to participate in the tactical basin planning process, which identifies and prioritize actions to protect and improve water quality. And these funds are targeted to statutorily established-in-law partners in the basin planning process, including watershed groups, natural resource conservation districts, and regional planning commissions. Next, we have a new grant program that is also effective this year. It's a statewide non-regulatory Clean Water Project Funding Program, and this funding will also support non-regulatory Clean Water Projects, but statewide, and we're working to avoid overlap with the formula grant that specifically is targeting work in Champlain and Memphurmagog. And this will support, in large part, natural resource restoration-type projects, as well as non-regulatory stormwater management activities. And we will be granting these funds out to a range of eligible entities, including, we anticipate, watershed groups, natural resource conservation districts, municipalities, and regional planning commission. So this grant program, combined with the Vermont Housing and Conservation Board's Land Conservation and Water Quality Projects Program, is proposed to meet the goals and outcomes of the new water quality enhancement grant program that was established in Act 76 of 2019. And the next line item is funding that is really critical to supporting our Clean Water Project Partner Network, as well as some of our capacity within the DEC Clean Water Initiative Program in meeting the requirements of Act 76 of 2019. So this includes development and implementation of our project tracking, accounting, and prioritization tools, lab analytics to help partners with their water quality sampling efforts, as well as partner or in organizational capacity development activities, really helping the network of Clean Water Partners to grow, along with this increase in investment. And it also includes this year, the wastewater treatment facility optimization support line item that had previously been listed separately. This funding will be awarded out to entities, including watershed groups, conservation districts, municipalities, and regional planning commission. And then next up, we have a new grant program this year that is really focused on supporting municipalities in meeting their stormwater regulatory requirements. And this new program will be co-administered by the Clean Water Initiative Program, as well as the Water Infrastructure Finance Program, focusing on helping municipal sites that need to comply with the three-acre general permit, and implementation of the municipal separate storm sewer system permit, which has phosphorus control plans in the most populated communities in Vermont that are mainly located in the Lake Champlain Basin. And this provides funding and financing to help municipalities meet those regulatory requirements. All of these projects will be regulatory and implementing regulatory programs that were established through the Vermont Clean Water Act or Act 64. And combined with VTrans Roads programs that are helping implement the municipal roads general permit, this program will help to fulfill the municipal stormwater implementation grant program that was established in Act 76. And then next up is a new line item related to innovation and alternative technologies. This will, the intent of this line item is to support development and use of technologies and practices or policies that facilitate, optimize, or accelerate cost-effective nutrient pollution removal strategies. Currently, Agency of Agriculture is administering the Vermont Phosphorus Innovation Challenge, and those projects are ongoing with prior funding, so the current budget does not propose funding for this category, but will be revisited next year. And here's an example of a project that Agency of Agriculture's Phosphorus Innovation Challenge funded, where they're working on converting phosphorus-containing byproducts, such as livestock manure, into market-viable compost. And next up is Patrick Monks to present the Developed Lands Implementation Grant.
Thanks, Emily. Good morning. I'm Patrick Monks. I'm the Program Manager in the Water Instruction Finance Program, formerly of the Stormwater Program, so I guess I'm working on this from two sides, sort of. This program is designed to fund, provide funding for sites that have been designated as three-acre sites. Three-acre site is an existing project with three or more acres of impervious surface. And under Act 64, 2015, the Clean Water Act, legislature required that all these sites obtain permit coverage to, in part, reduce phosphorus, comply with the Lake Champlain TMDL. We have roughly 800 of these projects, affecting 8,000 separate parcels. And intent here is to provide projects funding to obtain permit coverage, and then separately, as a second step, to implement required stormwater upgrades. Funding program is still under development, but we are contemplating an approach to provide sort of work and sort of a full contract with consulting engineers to engage affected landowners, and again, to help them obtain permit coverage. Yeah, and finally, as noted, this is an important part of our Oral foul-plans program, comply with Lake Champlain TMDL, and currently. comply with Lake Champlain TMDL, and currently develop lands that make up about 20% of the total phosphorus going to the lake. Thanks.
Thanks, Patrick. Next up, we have Oliver Pearson presenting the Lakes in Crisis Fund.
Good morning. I'm Oliver Pearson. I manage the Lakes and Ponds Programs for the DEC. This line gets its origin in statute, the Lakes in Crisis, addition to Title 10, Chapter 47, statute, established a process for the state to respond to lakes in crisis. And Lake Carmi was designated as a lake in crisis a few years back, and is the recipient of funding from this line, 4.1 in the other tier. The typical project types that we've funded to date with the Lakes in Crisis Fund have been water quality monitoring, both in Lake Carmi, as well as in tributaries to Lake Carmi. And that's aimed to really ensure that we're making progress towards achieving the water quality targets in the total maximum daily load phosphorus reduction plan that was published for Lake Carmi. We've also used funding from this line to support the operation of the aeration system. This is a system in the lake that's intended to reduce the contribution of legacy phosphorus from sediment in the lake to the overall phosphorus budget in Lake Carmi, thereby hopefully taking a step towards achieving our TMDL goals and reducing some of the challenges associated with water quality impairment in Lake Carmi, including cyanobacteria or harmful blue-green algae blooms. And we've also used the funds from this line to support agricultural equipment in the Lake Carmi watershed, aimed at reducing external loads of phosphorus into Lake Carmi. For example, the photograph you see on the left is the manure injector that's been used on hundreds of acres of fields in the Lake Carmi watershed to inject manure rather than broadcast, spread it, achieves soil fertility requirements of farmers, but reduce the loads of phosphorus into the lake. These funds have been awarded to the town of Franklin, Vermont, University of Vermont Extension, and the Vermont Agricultural and Environmental Laboratory to pay for the water quality monitoring work. And as mentioned, we have, DEC has published the Lake Carmi Crisis Response Plan, including a critical path section comprising all the projects that are ongoing in the Lake Carmi watershed. And so these funds support both the implementation of that plan and the broader implementation of the Lake Carmi phosphorus TMDL. The Lake Carmi Crisis Response Plan Critical Path Section is currently being updated to include all of the new projects starting in 2022 for the next two- to three-year period. And just, you know, we are making progress towards the goals of the Lake Carmi TMDL. As of July 2020, the last time we took a look at this, an estimated 41% of the phosphorus reductions required in the TMDL were achieved. Lots of work left to do, but it's nice to see some progress in the right direction. So thanks for your support on our effort up at Lake Carmi.
Thank you, Oliver. Next up, we have Eric Blatt presenting on the Clean Water State Revolving Fund, followed by municipal pollution control grants. Eric, you're needed.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Eric Blatt. I'm Director of Engineering in the Water Investment Division. So this slide is representative of the Clean Water State Revolving Fund. This has been in existence since 1987, and it funds a wide array of pollution control and abatement projects. Some of our more traditional projects are just shown in that first bullet. Much of the fund has been used for refurbishing wastewater treatment plants and for upgrading plants and collection systems. In 2018, there was a major expansion of the program to account for changes in federal law that expanded the eligibility of the program to even wider array of projects. And you see at the bottom of that list, natural resource projects, that was one of the major changes, along with being able to use these funds for private entities as well as municipal entities. The projects that we fund are a mix of voluntary projects and ones that are driven by our regulatory And to give a sense of the scale of this fund, we annually receive a federal grant. At the moment, it's on the order of $8 million, but it has varied from year to year. And the funds that we're seeking right now through the Clean Water Board are the dollars that are necessary to match that federal grant, which is roughly, which is a 20% grant, roughly 1.6 million out of the 11 million in this year's budget from the capital fund. One little fun fact, you see at the bottom of this screen, and this is an example of how we expanded eligibility in 2018. We provided $11 million in interim financing for three loans, and it just so happens that covered about 11,000 acres of land in Vermont. And it was essentially to conserve upland forest land and protect Lake Champlain Basin headwaters. One of those three loans has already been paid back. It's really, as I said, an interim financing tool to assist the private entities and nonprofits to get their financing in order, gives them a little more time to get the funds they need to acquire those lands for future protection. These loans are all low-interest loans, and in some cases, there is actual subsidy involved.
Thank you, Eric.
We can move to the next screen.
There might be a little bit of a lag. Do you see it yet?
No, not yet.
Do you folks see municipal pollution control grants?
I don't think.
Okay. It might just be a delay. Sorry about that.
Okay. A little slow up here in the Northeast Kingdom. Okay. So this is municipal pollution control grants, and as it's titled, municipal, these funds can only go to municipal entities. They're essentially companion funds with the funds that I just described under the Clean Water SRF. And these dollars essentially can go to the same types of projects listed here. Again, these funds can go to voluntary as well as regulatory projects. The upper limit of what we can provide from these funds to any given project is 35%. And we, in 2017, adjusted our priority system, which is actually a rule, to align the grant amount to the points that projects receive. In the past, we had what we referred to as categorical grants. We had grants for CSOs, for what we call dry weather flow projects, sludge inception and phosphorus, and they each had their own fixed percentages. And in 2017, when the rules changed, we modified that approach. And as I said, we use the point system to determine how much grant percentage a project would receive. And essentially, that point system, as it regards to grants, is based on the necessity of the project, its water quality benefits, public health benefits, and lack affordability for the communities. We have a minimum grant of 10%. Not all communities, based on their points, would necessarily receive any grants out of this program, but we do have a lower cutoff of 10%. Believe it is that below that, it really doesn't, it's not worth the administrative processing. And as I said, these grants are sort of companion sources of funds to the projects we fund through the Clean Water SRF.
Thank you, Eric.
And one other thing, for those who may not be that familiar, the photographs that you see there are rotating biological contactors at the Bennington Wastewater Treatment Plant, and I think they have a total of 32 RBCs. And this was, I believe, about a $10 million project.
Thank you, Eric. We have Danny Fitzco from Department of Forests, Parks, and Recreation.
Great. Good morning, everybody. As Emily said, I'm Danny Fitzco, and I'm the Director of Forests and the Department of Forests, Parks, and Recreation. And I'm going to take you into the woods now for the next two slides. This first line item is called Forest and Portable Skitter Bridges and Water Quality Practices. It's modest compared to many of the other line items. I think it's $110,000, but it does provide us a really important funding source to support the acceptable management practices for water quality on logging jobs. And these are basically practices that we provide technical assistance for to landowners, foresters, loggers, when we're practicing forest management. Part of the funds go to supporting portable skitter bridges. This image that you see here on the screen is a portable skitter bridge that we put in place temporarily during active forest management, then can be removed when the job is done. So we provide cost-share grants to loggers for that. And then we also provide technical assistance, education, and outreach for the AMPs. We have a really cool app coming out, should be coming out in January, which takes our AMPs from a paper-bound book onto an app in the field, which is going to be a really good tool for loggers to use when they're assessing jobs. It'll even have a cost worksheet associated with it. So these funds have really helped us to push innovation and get these practices in the hands of loggers in the woods where they need them. We track our complaints that come in for water quality and also our technical assistance. And the good news is that we're getting more calls for technical assistance than we are for complaints. So it's really turning the tides, and these funds really help us make a difference.
Thank you.
And I have the next one as well. This is Implement BMPs on State Forests, Parks, and Recreational Access Roads. These funds are really modeled after the work that we've done in municipalities, the Municipal Roads General Permit. A&R manages over 360,000 acres of land, and we have over 600 miles of roads and 1,500 miles of trails. And so what we have done is taken what happens in municipalities and adopt that to our road network on A&R lands. And so currently now, we've designed the assessment, which does look a little bit different because our roads and infrastructure are a little bit different on these lands, and we've created an assessment tool and identified practices for these roads. So right now, we have 15 projects that are in the pipeline that are completed or almost done, and we are actively starting our road prioritization assessment now on those hydrologically connected roadways. So by this spring, we will have a prioritized list of all those road segments and the practices, and we'll be able to really target these funds to the highest priority work on A&R lands.
Thank you, Danny. Next, we have Joel Perrigo with the Vermont Agency of Transportation.
Thank you, Emily. We have two grant programs funded by the Clean Water Fund at the agency. Both programs provide funding to municipalities for implementing best management practices to help aid in their compliance with the Municipal Roads General Permit. Most projects in both of these programs are completed with town forces and consist of replacement of undersized drainage culverts, addition of new drainage culverts where necessary, both grass line and stone line ditching, and providing proper crown on the road, either by grading and/or the addition of roadway material. Projects must be on hydrologically connected roadway segments, as defined by the Municipal Roads General Permit, and result in a segment or segments that are fully compliant with the permit upon completion. The first program here on the screen is the Municipal Roads Grants and Aid Program. You can find online 2.21. This particular program runs on an annual basis and provides a base offer to every municipality required to comply with the MRGP. Then based on the participation of the offers accepted, offers may go up, but they never decrease. The awards in this program typically range from $4,500 to $36,000, and the projects must be completed in one year's time. Last year, 230 out of the 260 municipalities that are eligible for this funding chose to participate and were provided funding. The second program on the next screen is the Better Roads Program. You can find this online 2.22. This program also runs on an annual basis, but is a competitive grant program that municipalities must apply for. Awards are capped at $20,000, and again, must be completed in one year's time. In the last six fiscal years, this program has provided funding for 278 grants, totaling more than $6.9 million in projects.
Thank you, Joel. We have Jen Haller with the Vermont Puzzle Conservation Board.
Good morning. I serve as the Policy Director for the Vermont Housing and Conservation Board. And in case it's helpful to know, VHCB is a quasi-public agency. We sit just outside of state government, and we're pleased to have joined the direct state agencies in the Clean Water Initiative effort a number of years ago. It was determined that our, the outcomes of our land conservation program, as well as our farm and forest viability program, protected and improved water quality and contribute to meeting the state's TMDL. So we've been doing that for a number of years. VHCB also is serving as the clean water service provider for the Lake Memphormagog Basin. So the two lines that I will talk about sit in the Capitol Bill, where they have for a number of years. And the first of these is in front of you. It's land conservation and water quality projects. We use this funding for grants to municipalities, conservation nonprofits, and state agencies for conservation projects, natural resources and farmland conservation that permanently protect that land from development. And they also include provisions in the conservation easements that protect riparian, such as riparian buffer zones, wetland protection zones. Many of the projects that we fund with this source result in floodplain and other types of restoration. And what you see here is an example of that, a grant to the River Conservancy, where they conserve nine acres of floodplain and restored a long stretch of this eroded stream bank along the White River. This program functions statewide. We can go on to the next. And this is actually one line, and I've got two slides to help illustrate. So water quality farm improvement and retirement projects. The farm improvement projects are smallish grants, $5,000 to $40,000, that we make directly to farmers for on-farm projects that do things such as reduce runoff, manage manure, and essentially help protect and improve water quality through capital-eligible infrastructure and equipment projects. As Laura mentioned earlier, ag activities in 2020 accounted for 96% of the total phosphorus reduction reported in the Clean Water Initiative Report, and this program is one piece of that. An example here is a photo from Central Vermont Fairmont Farms and Eastmont Pillar Use of Water Quality Grant to purchase injection technology to apply manure more directly and efficiently. So this program, those small awards, they're designed to work in and around and complement other state and federal funding sources that can help farmers comply with the RIPS, make improvements that they want to, to water quality, while keeping their businesses viable and able to continue to steward the land well. And then this line also funds, is available to fund retirement projects, and thank you, Emily. These are for those areas of the state that are in agricultural production, but it's really difficult, if not impossible, to continue to do that without adversely affecting water quality. So in coordination and consultation with ag agency and the Agency of National Resources, the Vermont Housing and Conservation Board will consider projects to allow for the outright purchase of those lands or for the placement of conservation easements on the properties that allow the farmer to move away from agricultural production in those spaces and also allow for restoration. And here's one of our best examples. It was formerly a farm right on the banks of the Winuski flooded frequently, was difficult for that enterprise to manage in a way that didn't adversely affect water for that enterprise to manage in a way that didn't adversely affect water quality. And now it will be managed as a wildlife management area by Fish and Wildlife, and restoration efforts have taken place there. So that's it for me.
Thank you, Jen. And I believe that concludes our presentation of the draft state fiscal year 23 budget. Thanks to all the presenters who helped to present this so you didn't have to listen to me talking the whole time. So I think we have some time for questions on the presentation. And if folks have any questions and you'd like to raise your hand, I can call upon you If anyone has time, difficulty accessing the raise hand feature, feel free to to speak up or if there's any questions in the room. And it looks like there are no questions on the presentation. So with that, I believe we can begin public comment. Sorry, I moved this over here.
All right, let's move into public comment. In what was answered with Go up?
We have the folks, some folks are speaking ahead of time to comment, so maybe we'll start with calling upon those individuals first. And then, once we get to that list, then we will open it up to anyone who didn't sign up to comment. And if you'd like to set a two minute time. We're going to set a two minute time limit to make sure that everybody has an opportunity to voice their comments. I'm going to get the timer set up, and then we'll go ahead and get started. Okay, so first on my list is Lynn Mano with Watersheds United Vermont.
Thank you. My name is Lynn Mano. I'm the Director of Watersheds United Vermont, an Association of Community-Based Watershed Groups with the mission to empower watershed groups to protect and restore Vermont's waters. I first want to thank the Clean Water Board and the Agency of Natural Resources and all of the other agencies on this call for your work on the FY23 Clean Water Budget. We're asking you to consider two important changes. We ask that the Tier One Enhancement Grants be increased to $5 million of the Clean Water Fund as is required by law in Act 76. In section 1389, Act 76 states that in the allocation of funds from the Clean Water Fund, the Board shall, as a first priority, make recommendations regarding funding for the following grant programs, which shall be given equal priority. And the fourth of those equal priorities, D, is the Water Quality Enhancement Grants, which should be at a funding level of at least 20% of the annual balance of the Clean Water Fund, up to $5 million. The current amount of the Clean Water Fund allocated to the enhancement grants in the draft FY23 budget is $3 million, or 12% of the fund, far short of the 20% required by the Act. As a note, we highly value the work of V H C B, and we are not suggesting removing funding from V H C B. But the V H C B funds are capital dollars for a specific program, and the funding to V H C B should be in addition to and not instead of the Clean Water Fund dollars that should be and were meant to be allocated to fully fund the enhancement grant program. We believe the enhancement grant program funds are critical for the protection and restoration of all of Vermont's waters. Until formula grants are available for all impaired waters, enhancement grants are the funds available for any natural resources or non-regulatory stormwater project in roughly half the state, or to address impairments beyond phosphorus within the Champlain and Memphamagog Basin. This includes waters impaired for bacteria, chloride, temperatures, sediment, and of course nitrogen in the Connecticut watershed. And beyond impaired waters, enhancement grant program is critical to ensuring that other waters in the state do not become impaired, including funding for clean water projects that address stressed waters, any anti-degradation work, protection of high-quality waters, and projects that address the full suite of water quality benefits. We are asking a lot of these water of these enhancement grants, and WAV is asking the Clean Water Board and A and R to invest in all of our waters and fund the enhancement grants at the level obligated by the legislature in Act 76. Our second request to A and R and the Clean Water Board is to consider an increase by of $200,000 to the allocation of another Tier One priority, the Tactical Basin Planning and Basin Water Quality Council efforts. The current funding amount for this work is set at that same level of $600,000 this year, but only a small amount of that funding is needed for the Basin Water Quality Council setup as Act 76 formula grants do not go into effect until FY23. Additionally, the current funding does not include participation for two of the Basin Water Quality Council statutory partners, the towns and statewide conservation organizations. We want to make sure that the Basin Water Quality Council members are appropriately compensated for their work and that we still have the funding necessary for the tactical basin planning efforts as these plans are foundational tools for clean water work in the state. I have some additional comments that I can submit in writing, and I just want to thank you for considering WAV's comments today and for your continued commitment to the protection and restoration of Vermont's waters. Thank you.
Thank you, Lynn. Next, we have John Groban with the NRC. And you're muted, John.
Thank you. Sorry about that. I shouldn't have that by now, like everybody else. So good morning. Thanks for this opportunity to comment. My name is John Groban. I'm the Policy and Water Program Director for the Vermont Natural Resources Council or V N R C. Just for the record, V N R C is a statewide environmental advocacy group. We've been around for more than 50 years. We work on a variety of policy issues, water, forests, climate, and energy, sustainable communities. So I I'm basically gonna second what Lynn Mano from Watersheds United Vermont said and put a little bit finer point on a couple of the comments she made. So, you know, we are concerned, V N R C is concerned that the budget does not meet the requirement in law, as Lynn pointed out, for the funding of the enhancement grants program to 20% of the Clean Water Fund, up to a maximum of $5 million. It looks to me like the Agency of Natural Resources, the Clean Water Board, is combining capital funds with the Clean Water Fund to get to the $5 million statutorily required limit. And Lynn referenced a statute, it's 10 V S A 1389 E D. But the statute seems clear to V N R C that the 20% is of the Clean Water Fund, not the Clean Water Fund and the Capital Fund combined. So we ask that the the budget that gets recommended by the Clean Water Board for the Clean Water Fund be altered and include the full $5 million for enhancement grants from the fund for for that for the enhancement grant bucket. I also want to echo as as Lynn noted, we really appreciate all the work that V H C B does in the water arena and thinks that V H C B has done a very good job and thinks they should be funded, but not at the expense of this enhancement grant fund. We think that the funding for V H C B should come from a separate bucket. It can come from the Capital Fund, it can come from other places. But as Lynn outlined, it is really important to meet that statutory deadline for the $5 million. I would also note that this was an issue that received a lot of attention in the legislature. When Act 76 was created, there was a lot of debate and changes around this section. And it was not, this is a very intentionally written section. And I think, you know, it does not meet the intent of the discussions that we had in the legislature about this requirement that Lynn and I are highlighting. Where, you know, another concern that V N R C has with how the budget is constructed and relating perhaps to where the additional money could come to fully fund the enhancement grants is we do think that the funding for developed lands, the three acre stormwater permit program is more than it should be. We think that there should, there could be some funding for entities that need to comply with a three acre permit, but by and large, private entities that have developed commercial properties over the years or high-end residential property should not receive public funding for compliance with that permit obligation. And that is an area that we like to see reduced in funding and think that money could be diverted to fully fund the enhancement grant program as required by the law. So those are my comments.
Thank you, John. I appreciate your comments. All right, next we have Bob Flaherty with Trimble. If you are on the meeting, if you'd like to unmute. It appears, though, that he may not be here. So moving on to the next, Bob Fisher with New England Water Environment Association and City of South Burlington. And it looks like he may not have been able to join us either. Next, we have Rob Evans with Franklin Watershed Committee, which, is he still on? I don't think he was able to join. I think he did mention he had written comments, so.
He has written comments, I think. Just let her out, if he asked if I would read it to the group.
Sure, would you like to share? We will try to limit to two minutes, but if you'd like to share the highlights, then can we just do a sound check? Can folks hear Ernie on that end of the room?
Are folks able to hear me?
A little bit. If you'd like to move on that, would be great. Thank you all for bearing with us on the hybrid, the hybrid meeting. So the camera's right there if you'd like to step up.
I can just stand and do it. Can everyone hear me now? Yes?
We're good, thank you.
This was directed to Commissioner Walkie. As President of the Franklin Watershed Committee and Vice President of Lake Carmine Cameras Association, representing well over 240 members, I mean, writing to request your additional support for continued work to address the significant water quality challenge we face at Lake Carmine, the state's only designated lake in crisis. While we appreciate the support we have received over the years from state legislators, our state water quality partners, our farming community, town officials, much more work needs to be done. I'd like to like to highlight a few areas I feel are critical. The data collection tool, the U B M sampling platform, which has been out, has been critical in providing real-time data for monitoring weather conditions, water conditions, and has had a lot of a lot of positive information from them. I won't read the entire thing, certainly I don't have the time. While we, let's see. For the past three years, we failed to have an entire summer where the aeration system in the lakes been fully functioning. In fact, we've had several weeks where both were down on the northern and southern systems. We feel we missed an opportunity to fully understand how the lake will respond when we have an entire summer when the aeration system's fully operational. For this reason, we respectfully request that the U B M platform be brought back to the lake for the summer of 2022 to support our data. Two, we know from the data, we have the data, high phosphorus levels are a result of direct impacts of decades of agricultural activity in the watershed. Continued high levels of total phosphorus and significant allergies that continue clearly demonstrate we're not doing enough. It's our understanding and maintenance of the aeration system will be turned over to the town of Franklin. Essentially, we're requesting a financial solution through the annual maintenance contract that allows the vendor who developed this system to provide on-ground support needed to keep this system functioning. Four, we recognize the need to support the town of Franklin for a portion of the electrical costs associated with the operation of the aeration system. The financial is sadly independent with state, federal grants, and private public donations. We've dedicated thousands of hours of volunteer work around the lake and continue to do so, but we need additional funding. We'd like to request that Lake Carmine TMDL be immediately revised on a more sound scientific basis on line with current Vermont water quality standards and requirements for one acre waters of 18 micrograms per liter, total phosphorus to 70 actively fine 23. We're grateful to all the work that has been done to everyone. We really want to be a shining example of what can be done at Lake Carmine if we all work together. As we've said along, it could not be done at Lake Carmine, it can't be done anywhere else than Vermont. I do very respectfully, Rob Evans, President of the Franklin Watershed Committee. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next we have Jared Carpenter.
Good morning, members of the committee. Mr. Chairman, welcome. It's good to see you again. My name is Jared Carpenter, speaking on behalf of Lake Champlain Committee. I want to reiterate what what John and Lynn said. I'm going to stay a little bit higher level. As many of you know, I've been involved in this process and of course, Act 76 implementation with the Clean Water Service Provider Program, and then of course, implementation, excuse me, of Act 64. In terms of speaking higher level, I guess, and I will file written comments as well, of course, but I'm concerned that I'm concerned that the budget is basically stretched too thin. I'm concerned that there is not enough money going into Tier One generally, which is supposed to be the main priority under 1389 E1, and instead being spent on other other programs in Tier Two and Tier Three, which are always considered, air quotes, next priorities according to the language, or secondary priorities. As we've often said with Act 64 and the Clean Water Service Provider Program, we're sort of building this airplane as we're flying it. So we really aren't going to know a lot of times whether things work until a couple of years down the road and we look back. But that being said, we just don't know in terms of the formula grant structure whether or not $7 million is going to be enough, because it doesn't just have to take into account project implementation, but it also has to take into account, you know, looking, identification of projects, outreach, paying for time for people who are going to go knock on doors, find willing landowners, do all that groundwork that's necessary that sometimes just doesn't pan out. I mean, I don't know percentages, but more often, as often as not, when 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 a group goes out there and tries to do a clean water project and reaches out to a landowner, sometimes it just, the efforts fail and you have to move along. And that's that's wasted time and therefore wasted money. So $7 million might very well be enough, but I would err on the side of caution and say that this amount should be more just in case, you know, or have a backup reserve just in case a clean water service provider needs more funding and they need more for projects and for administration and implementation. It just seems to be a good safety net at this point. And I'll wrap up, and of course, like I said, I'll file written comments. I also do want to comment on the enhancement grants just to reinforce what what John and Lynn said. And this was always envisioned as something that would do water quality projects, things like fish habitat, organism passage, wildlife habitat, things that don't necessarily have to do with pollution reduction. It was really considered a statewide program outside of Lake Champlain Basin as a way that not, so not all the money is spent right in Lake Champlain. So some of it gets dispersed to other organizations and other groups. And to reiterate that, you know, nothing against V H C B, they do fantastic work, and they do this kind of work. They do these water quality improvements, projects, but it was never really envisioned that they would be incorporated in this. So I would add, ask that that be bumped up to the $5 million from the Clean Water Fund where it should be, just so there's adequate money for other projects and programs. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Jared.
Next, we have Kathy Erfer with Connecticut River Conservancy.
Hey, good morning, everyone. Thank you for the time and consideration to hear my comments. So I'm going to reiterate what some folks have said. Again, it's Kathy Erfer, I'm the river steward for Connecticut River Conservancy, and so I work actively on the entire eastern half of the state. The water quality enhancement grants are the primary grants that can be used in the Hudson and Connecticut River Basins for any water quality project work. And as mentioned, my recollection regarding the legislative intent of this grant program was to ensure that while the Clean Water Service Providers were being set up under Act 76, there would be funding available to continue clean water. under Act 76, there would be funding available to continue clean water projects in those basins that are not being prioritized at the moment under the clean water service providers, namely the Connecticut River and Hudson River Watersheds. And to continue to do clean water projects that are focused on other sources of pollution besides phosphorus, such as nitrogen, bacteria, sewage, et cetera. As Jared mentioned, while we fully support the efforts of V H C B, that we feel that the water quality enhancement grants are being shortchanged through this allocation of $2 million to V H C B under that program heading. The law states that the water quality enhancement grants are to be funded at 20% of the Clean Water Fund. So it is not appropriate to use capital funds to reach that 20% amount. Just a couple of little notes. The picture of the dam removal in the presentation on Slide 25 sort of implies that the water quality enhancement grants can be used for dam removals. As one of the organizations in the state that is doing a lot of dam removals, I'm not sure that that's actually the case. We have been told in previous conversations that we would need to rely on Whisper, the Whisper Program for that. So if that is the case, and in fact, the enhancement grants can be used for dam removals, it's just another argument why it should be fully funded at the $5 million as allocated, as, you know, indicated in the legislation. And just another point is, I think it would be really useful and helpful in the future for the clean water budget line items to explicitly state where that money ends up getting spent geographically in the state. So for instance, in this draft budget, I believe there are eight budget lines totaling $15.2 million for programs that are specific and occur only in the Lake Champlain and Lake Memphremagog basins. What that means is that there is a remaining $10.6 million, which is the only money that is actually to be distributed statewide and can fund any kind of clean water work in the other basins. And even part of that $10.6 million could still be allocated to the lake. So perhaps, you know, $5 million is going to make its way over to the eastern half of the state. And to summarize that, you know, page 22 of the Clean Water Performance Report shows that of the $194 million spent since 2016, $120 million has gone to the Lake Champlain Basin. Only $53 million has gone to support projects on the Connecticut River side of the state, which again, is half of the state. So we will follow up with written comments with a little more detail, and I really appreciate the opportunity to comment today.
Thank you, Kathy. Next, we have John Bennett with Wyndham Regional Commission.
Hello. Thank you very much for the opportunity to comment. I'm John Bennett with the Associate Director of the Wyndham Regional Commission, and I'm testifying to advocate for the board to provide the full $5 million allocation of funding from the Clean Water Fund for the enhancement grant program. More or less echoing or seconding what a number of other commenters have said. Specifically, line item 1.41, projects should be funded at the $5 million rather than the $3 million shown in the draft budget. As Regional Planning Commission for 27 towns in southeastern Vermont, W R C has long history of working collaboratively with towns, non-governmental organizations, and County Natural Resources Conservation District on important water quality work. From helping towns and landowners with managing stormwater to developing river corridor management plans and implementing the river protection and restoration projects that they develop. One of the biggest challenges we face collectively is a lack of funding for project development and implementation. Tropical Storm Irene damage repair and restoration efforts have taken a long time as we've had to pull together funding from multiple sources in collaboration with many partners. We've been working with the Conservation District for years to secure resources to support a stream geomorphic assessment and develop a corridor plan for the West River, the largest in our region. We've successfully developed river corridor plans for other rivers in the region, and the result of those is a large number of water quality restoration projects that need funding to construct. We've had the wettest four months of summer on record in the biggest flooding event since Tropical Storm Irene. Road foremen have been telling us that managing stormwater is becoming exhausting. In addressing the increasing impacts of changing climate conditions, funding to support water quality work with towns and other partners is critically important. Regional Commissions and many others sought and obtained $5 million for the enhancement grants for clean water projects in areas of state outside the Lake Champlain watershed. Providing only $3 million of the $5 million appears contrary to legislative intent and will shortchange the watersheds and threaten water quality in the region. The proposed draft budget does not seem to meet the statutory requirements of 10 V S A 1389 E D to provide at least 20% of the Clean Water Fund for the Water Quality Enhancement Grant Program. Program is vital to funding projects that maintain high-quality waters and address water quality issues in the state outside the Lake Champlain Basin. Thank you for the opportunity to comment.
Thank you, John. Next is Mary Russ with White River Partnership.
Thank you, Emily. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Great. Thank you all for the opportunity to provide comment. My name is Mary Russ. I'm the Executive Director of the White River Partnership, a watershed group working to improve the health of the White River and east-central Vermont. Our watershed is part of the Connecticut River Basin. Like others, I have one general comment. I believe two Clean Water Fund allocations in Tier One are both inconsistent with the law and insufficient to meet our statutory clean water goals. I would like to sort of reiterate folks' comments on Budget Line Items 1.3, which is the proposed $600,000 Clean Water Fund allocation to basin planning, basin water quality council participation, education and outreach. Like Lynn said, this year's budget, FY '22 budget, allocated $600,000 for only one of those four required purposes, which was basin planning grants. So it appears the proposed FY '23 allocation is underfunding three of those four required purposes. As a result, I'll reiterate what Lynn requested. We believe line item 1.3 should be increased to at least $800,000 so that all four of the required elements are funded in this budget. Similarly, on Budget Line Item 1.41, we agree with everyone who has said we believe the allocation should be $5 million of the Clean Water Fund itself. And to provide more landscape of why this is needed, again, this is the only line item available for non-regulatory projects statewide. As previous commenters have mentioned, the needs for these funds is enormous. So pressure on this budget line item is significant. Some examples from the White, these funds would cover work to address almost 30 miles of streams impaired due to bacteria and iron leachate from an old dump, over 70 miles of streams listed as stressed for habitat alterations, nutrients, sediment, siltation, temperature, turbidity, the list goes on, to prevent degradation of waters from becoming stressed and to protect high-quality waters. We work with the state to address all of these priorities, and we receive state funding to implement a wide variety of regulatory projects. But the need to continue this work in the White River is pressing, and our watershed is only one of 15 basins in the state with similar needs. And so I urge you to consider increasing funding in line item 1.3 to $800,000 and to fully fund line item 1.41 at $5 million from the Clean Water Fund as required by law. Thanks again for the opportunity to provide comments.
Thank you, Mary. Okay, next, we have Peter Gregory with Two Rivers Adipici Regional Commission.
Thank you, Emily. Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board, for a couple of minutes, a couple, less than that. I don't want to reiterate what everybody else has said, but my comments are related to the enhancement fund amount. I am Peter Gregory, Two Rivers Adipici Regional Commission, but I'm also speaking for the Mount Askutney Regional Commission. We represent the two commissions, 40 towns along the Connecticut River and White River. And we were involved very much in the legislation development a couple of years ago and talked about how this program was particularly important in our area of the state. We have a lot of high-quality waters. We want to make sure that they don't degrade. And we also said to the legislature, and they concurred, that if this program generally is going to have statewide support, we need to be able to invest statewide, and this program does that. And I, like others, believe that the legislative intent here and the law itself is very clear so that the proposal is underfunding the enhancement grant. So we would support that going back up to five as it should be. Like others, you know, V H C B does wonderful work. What they have done and are doing is essential. So we wouldn't want that to stop, but just we need additional investment in enhancement. So I will stop right there. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Peter. Next, we have David Worth with Buzz Glee. Let me do a quick scan to see if he is with us. Don't believe so. Okay. Next is Jill Arachi with Vermont Conservation Districts.
Good morning, everyone. I'm going to keep my camera off because of my Wi-Fi. I'm Jill Arachi. I'm the Executive Director of the Vermont Association of Conservation Districts. Conservation districts have been around since the early 1940s, created by the Vermont Soil Conservation Act to work with landowners and communities on protecting Vermont's natural resources. And we've been implementing projects with support of state and federal agencies, private sectors, private organizations and funders in the fields of agriculture, natural resources, stormwater, education, forestry, and others. So most of you know us, but I just wanted to remind you of our history. We think of ourselves, along with the watershed groups, as the boots-on-the-ground implementers of programs, both technical assistance and project implementation. And our board members are composed of local landowners who represent the perspective of the local landowners and communities. I, too, would like to address the two points that others have made. We also would like to see the enhancement grants increased to $5 million where they belong and the basin planning increased to $800,000. This is, these funds provide funding for a wide range of activities that districts and others do to support D E C's efforts to identify priority needs and provide monitoring, do community outreach, inform the basin planning process, as well as educate others about, and engage others about the basin planning process. And we're now adding a section, we're adding participation in the basin water quality councils to that funding. So we, too, would like to see that increased and also to support the other participants in the basin water quality councils. We have had the opportunity of several block grants, design and implementation block grants, through our state partner, the Natural Resources Conservation Council, that has enabled us to fund, oh, I can see that my buzzer just buzzed. I just wanted to say, talk about a little bit, just mention a few of the projects that are funded in the Connecticut River and elsewhere. You know, these are both phosphorus, nitrogen reduction, stormwater projects, natural resources projects. And I'd love to give you a list of those projects so you can see what would be lost if we don't have adequate funding. One of them in Essex County is a $400,000 project that was funded, the design was funded by D E C. And with such a small, with only $3 million in that fund, it would be inadequate to fund that type of project. So I want to be sure you know what those projects are, and I perhaps will submit a list. Thank you very much.
Next, we have Ernest and Andrea Engelhardt. How many left to begin here? Great. Would you like to come over here? Well, can you hear me if I'm here?
But again, I want to thank Secretary Moore and all the work you've already done for Lake Carmine. I'm just speaking for myself. I'm a Campers Association member, but we have a camp. And it's great, all the money, resources, but unfortunately, I was surprised to see the report 41% reduction in phosphorus has been achieved because Columbus Day, we were at the lake, people were neighbors, take out their docks, and people were anxious about going into the lake. This is in October because of the cyanobacteria bloom. They went into the lake anyway because it's like, we've got to do it or it's just worse. So we haven't, I don't think, from my observation, seen a 41% reduction in blooms. The blooms were worse, I think, this year from our shore, which is the north shore, than any others. And we showed you pictures, in the middle of the lake, it was blooming in September. So I would like to see money put into that innovation line. And what we've done since 2008 hasn't reduced the phosphorus back in the lake. As far as I know, it's the same, which might not be true, but I haven't seen any actual in-water testing to tell us the phosphorus concentration is less. So maybe we should innovate our thinking. We're a nature-sensitive state. We're gardeners. The growing season in Vermont is May to October. In Burlington, it says May 8th, October 3rd. So perhaps agriculture could come in line with nature and not add nutrients to the land when the plants can't take it up. We use manure tea, but we don't put it on now. We put it on when the plants are growing. So I'd like to see money put in to support a change in agricultural practices for more storage so they don't have to spread when the plants aren't growing. And also, I think it's great, we're processing the manure to do something else with it. But more storage or truck it out of our watershed of thinking where else can we put it? We need to store it and use it when the plants can take it up and not have it just flush into the lake, which is hugely expensive now to get it out. So put on our, maybe go with nature for manure spreading. And we could use our little watershed as a test case. Try it with us and see if the phosphorus levels go down and then maybe expand it further. But again, thank you for all your work and the moonshot box you've put into us. Thank you.
Would you like to?
Yes, please. Ernie Engelhardt, I'm on the Lake Carmine Campers Association Board of Directors. My wife and I have owned a camp in Lake Carmine since 1991. Have enjoyed it mostly. I wanted to mention something that we spoke about at our Lake Carmine Campers Association meeting last night. That is putting some stream gauges on several of the streams coming in Lake Carmine. I think the Department or Agency of Agriculture, Food Marketing is talking about the possibility of putting those in place on some of the streams of Lake Carmine, which in our opinion would be an excellent use.
May I just interrupt you to move closer to the microphone? I just got a note that it's hard to hear you. I'm so sorry to interrupt your thought process. Come right up. Sorry to interrupt you.
All right, folks. I wanted to talk about stream gauges, which I understand Agriculture, Food and Marketing is considering possibly putting on several of the streams in Lake Carmine watershed. We at the Lake Carmine Campers Association think that's a great opportunity to increase actual field stream based, Lake Carmine. Currently, we're going on, pretty much, pretty much most of the information that we have is based on modeling and estimates, or the estimated amount of phosphorus reduction. So far, every beach is based on modeling and not actual conditions. In the lake, I think that putting in these stream gauges, we would strongly urge that that happen on Lake Carmine. Would have two definite advantages. First, it'll provide data on the amount of nutrients and food, including phosphorus, coming into the lake. Currently, we don't do this on every line, primarily on modeling. It would provide a year-by-year picture of what is coming into the lake, which is an important. important issue. We need to know what actually is coming into the lake. Secondly, the information from these streams, which would include both the concentration of the phosphorus and the volume of water coming into the lake, would allow us to fine-tune or fine-tune some of the factors that go into the modeling program that we could, the factors would more accurately reflect what's happening in the different kinds in the fields, crop types, and many other issues, soil types and slope. These factors could then be used on any lake in the state or body of water in the state if they're updated and based on Vermont information. Anyway, that's my push for, I pushed for stream gauges in Lake Carmine. Thank you for your time. And I just want to mention that the materials and this whole meeting was extremely well-organized and straightforward to understand, and I want to thank everyone who was involved. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ernest.
Thank you, Ernest.
Okay, and our last commenter that has signed up is Dan Albrecht with Chittenden County Regional Planning Commission.
Thanks very much. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, thanks. Again, for the record, Dan Albrecht, Senior Planner, Chittenden County Regional Planning. Some of you may know my boss a little better, Charlie Baker. Just a quick comment I submitted in writing to, I just want to commend the board for the funding on Items 2.23 and 3.21. With 2.23, so Chittenden County here, we have 12 MS4 permities, nine municipalities, and then U V M, the airport, and then the third is V Trans, which is technically a TS4. But I realize that, you know, the MS4s, it is a permit obligation, but these are the communities that, you know, have a lot of the people in the state of Vermont, not just the county as a whole, but the state of Vermont. So for better or for worse, you know, these municipalities, land use developed over time, and now we're sort of catching up on how we administer stormwaters. So these municipalities, the MS4s, U V M, and the airport for that matter, I mean, they have projects lined up, they have people, they have engineers on staff, they have engineers on contract, they've got, some of them have stormwater utilities, they've got budgets, and they're doing projects left and right to meet, to do, meet their flow restoration plans, which we adopted a few years ago, and now they just wrote phosphorus control plans. So we're glad to see funding for that, even though we understand it is a permit obligation. You dance with the date that brung you, and these, these projects are ready to go in these suburban and urban municipalities. The last one, and you guys, you know, it'd be great to have some, you guys think about this a little bit more, the 3.21 for the Develop Lands Implementation Grant project. As Patrick mentioned, there's a lot of landowners subject to this permit, and I'm just wondering how this will be prioritized. And we are a recipient of a design implementation block grant for public-private partnership projects, so hopefully those could be prioritized because they tend to get off the ground quick. And so it's just something to think about, and to the extent the quick funding policy can be updated to provide a little more guidance on how those might, types of projects will be selected would be great, because I'm sure a lot of people will be coming to funding those projects. But again, and lastly, I would, I've been to a couple of these meetings, and this PowerPoint is, it's awesome. I mean, they always do a good job, and now it's even better with even me, a policy nerd on this stuff, can find exactly which ones you're talking about. That helps quite a bit, and I think it'll help the public get more involved. So keep up the great work, staff. Good stuff. Thanks.
So that was everyone we had signed up ahead of time to comment. If we have a little bit of extra time, could you like entertain additional comments, if anyone would like to?
Yes, absolutely. And I would like to note that I think someone put a quick comment in the chat. We should record that for later, something about seconding from Ron Rose there is. We should make sure we record that.
Excellent. We will absolutely capture that. Thank you for flagging. So if anyone would like to comment who has not had the chance to, you can raise your hand using the raise hand function, and if you have any trouble finding that, feel free to unmute and let us know. Seems quiet.
All right. Well, I would like to, I think we're good to move on to Item 6 then. All right. Well, I'm glad we said a little bit of extra time. We didn't get all of it, but I would like to thank everyone who came here physically and who came here digitally to, to share your perspectives with us, to give your comments. The next steps on that, we'll take those back and consider those comments at the Clean Water Board and make sure that we have responses to all of you. I think it's very important. You raised some very important issues for us to think about, and I really appreciate the perspectives you're all bringing to the table. I am spacing on the exact date of that meeting. I know it's in December, but.
December 14th, and we will be posting details on the Clean Water Board Meetings webpage. And if you've not subscribed to our newsletter, there's a link there as well to subscribe so you can receive those announcements.
All right. And if there's nothing else, thank you all for attending the public hearing for the Clean Water Board. Do we require a motion to adjourn?
Sure. Before we do, may I just highlight one other next step? If folks have not already, there's an online questionnaire, and we welcome your participation in that. It takes approximately 20 minutes average, based on the responses we've received so far. So far, we have about 40 responses. We typically get close to a couple hundred, so we're really hopeful that we'll be receiving your feedback there with some targeted questions. And if you'd like to submit additional written comments, you're welcome to do so, emailing that to the email address that's listed on the Clean Water Board webpage. And thank you all for your participation in this public comment period.
Well, can I just add to that? I would go even beyond welcome. We would strongly encourage and also ask to the extent watershed organizations and other partners are willing to share the link to the survey within their own networks to increase participation, we would also be grateful.
And I've put the link to the webpage where you can find all those details in the chat. And that public comment period closes November 19th, and we will be sending out reminders.
Well, thank you very much, Emily. Do I have a motion to adjourn from any of the board members? Second?
Second.
Thank you. This public hearing for the Clean Water Board is adjourned.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, board. Thanks, Emily.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Thank you, one and all.